You're ready to go.
Good evening, everyone. Let me hit my. I got it. Okay, sorry. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 26th meeting of the North Bend Planning Commission. The first thing we will do is call our, do our order, our call to order and do our roll call. Commissioner Bush? Got it on, you have to unmute. There you go.
I'm present.
Commissioner Bovers.
Present.
Commissioner Greenberg has been excused. Commissioner Blanco's here. Commissioner Tao has been excused. Commissioner Mo?
Present.
And Commissioner Targason? Not with us. Okay, so we'll call that an excuse one. So we do have our forum. First thing on the agenda tonight is the opportunity for the public. A public comment on the non-agenda item. We do allow three minutes per person, and if there's someone on there that would like to speak, we'll need your name and your address.
We do not have any members of the public tonight.
Okay. Mark Jocelyn is on. I would, Mark, were you wanting to speak on something?
Sorry.
He's, he's muted. He's got his mic off, so.
Sorry, good evening. Yes, I'm a member of the public. I have nothing to say or no comment. I'm simply a bearing witness and paying attention. I. This is not protestizing. I am on the ballot to run for city council this fall, and so I am simply here doing my homework without further ado or opinion. So I go about your business. I don't want to intimidate anyone or.
Thank you for joining us.
Your, your process, but that's why I'm here is just to learn about what it is you all do and who you all are. So I appreciate your commitment to public service. Thank you.
You're welcome. The first thing we want to do, or third, our third on our agenda is to approve the minutes from July 22nd. I hope you've had an opportunity to review them. Are there any corrections or additions to these minutes? Does any has or anybody say anything? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the July 22nd minutes of the planning commission?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion for approval of the July 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Commissioner Mo here.
In a second. Commissioner Bovers, I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Close? Zero. Okay, we're approved on that. Let's see, this is, okay, we are on item number four, which is the topic of our meeting tonight, the 2021 zoning macro, zoning map amendments and North Bend municipal code amendments associated with replacement of the USOD with a new NB2 introduction. Did you all get those USOB and all that stuff? I had to look at all of it myself, but.
Lot of acronyms there.
It is. There's a lot of acronyms. And who's good? Are you gonna take that tonight, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll turn it over to you then.
All right, this is pretty simple. The overall intent here is to update and simplify our zoning map. So I've got a number of different areas that we can run through together to explain them each to you. And a lot of this follows from updates to the municipal code that created that new chapter 1813 special districts. The planning commission worked on that back in the springtime, and the intent of that was to simplify our overlay districts so that we don't have so much overlay. So an overlay district prescribes additional measures on top of the underlying zoning. And that's created a lot of confusion over the years with developers. They'll open up the zoning map and the city's zoning regulations, and they'll look to what they believe is the zone, and it is, for example, the zone, if it were the neighborhood business zone, they would look to the neighborhood business regulations and see the different permitted and prohibited uses. That's not necessarily what the actual permitted uses would be, though, because of these overlays. The overlays prescribed additional limitations or different bulk and dimensional standards specific to the area for various purposes. But we wanted to get rid of that confusion and just simplify our zoning so that if there's a difference, let's just create its own zone, so it's much more transparent and evident to developers and to staff who administer the regulations. So that's the essential purpose of, of a lot of it. And the other part of it is just to reflect updated properties that have been acquired by the city of North Bend, Seive Metro Park District and King County for public purposes. There's been a lot of acquisitions over the last 10 years, and we haven't updated our zoning map accordingly. So a lot of those properties that are for public purposes, for open space, for levy setbacks, for park purposes, were often still zoned based on their underlying zoning. So that could have been Employment Park, which is an industrial zone, residential, and then various other zones. So we're trying to consolidate that to reflect the public purpose and zone it for parks, open space and public facilities. So this will all correlate with an update to our comprehensive plan next year. So you want to make sure that your zoning code is consistent with your comprehensive plan, and we do intend to do that, but we don't need to open up our come plan this year just to make these small changes because we're going to be opening it up for a major update next year. And that will be revising our land use assumptions, our growth assumptions, and a lot of different things together. So it didn't make sense to do an interim update to our comp plan when we're going to just do the whole thing next year. And we believe that these amendments to our zoning code do remain consistent with our comp plan, though, and that the permitted uses that are allowed within these new proposed zones or amended zones are also allowed within the original zones, which are consistent with the underlying land use districts of the comprehensive plan. So let me share my screen, and I'll go to each of those areas so that we can describe what's being proposed. Go first and click. All right. Can you guys see that?
I don't have anything, but somebody else got something on their screen.
I see that it says that you've started to screen share, but it's just, it's still black.
Oh, okay. Let me, I'm used to sharing on Microsoft Teams, but not on Zoom, so I have to figure this out here. Okay. About that.
There we go.
Okay. And I will zoom in on this because I imagine that it's a little bit hard to see when you're sharing. So we'll start out with area number one. What you can see is that light blue color. So that is what has been our urban separate, a portion of our urban separator overlay district. And the, if you look at the existing zoning map, I can bring that up for reference. Let's see if I can, hopefully it'll just work to click on that. You guys see that? Okay. So zooming into the same area, you see all the crosshatching across that area. The crosshatching represents the urban separator overlay district over the underlying zones. And that has previously, or up until now, applied across our parks and open space zone, our neighborhood business zone, and the residential zone out there. And the original intent of that urban separator overlay district was to create a lower intensity of uses than what was allowed by the underlying zoning, reflecting that it's adjacent to Meadowbrook Farm and Tollgate Farm, and kind of a true urban separator between North Bend and Snoqualmie. But again, we're trying to avoid that confusion. So why not just create new zones that reflect those different uses? And so that's what we're proposing to do. So let me go back to the proposed zoning map. What you'll see here is we don't zoom. We have gotten rid of the crosshatching. So the underlying zones of the parks and open space and the residential, and this is constrained residential, which is a lower density residential, will just be those zones now. There was no purpose to the overlay on top of the parks and open space zone. It didn't do anything different. It was just part of the overlay. And the overlay that applied over the residential zone, it used to be standard low-density residential. And then about six years ago, we rezone that to constrained low-density residential, which is a lower intensity itself. So it regular low-density residential is four units per acre, constrained residential is two units per acre. And so that addressed by itself, one of the purposes of the urban separator overlay district for residential purposes within the commercial area, and that's what you see in the blue here. The limitations are more about bulk and dimensional requirements, so a little bit lower height limit, more restrictive, maximum impervious surface coverage and so forth. So rather than having that as a separate overlay provision, again, we are just creating a new neighborhood business two zone. And the uses that were described in the urban separator overlay district for commercial uses, now are just directly applied to this neighborhood business two zone. So it's a simplification of our zoning code to provide, again, more transparency and ease of use. Any questions on that before we go on to number two?
Yeah, real quick. Would, so would this essentially be increasing the number of dwellings per acre from two to four in the low density?
No, it doesn't do any change to the permitted uses or the intensities or anything. It remains exactly the same as what it is today.
Wow, this is confusing. I'm really glad we're doing this.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay.
James, did you have something? I interrupted you.
Nope, I was just gonna clarify what, what he said, so.
All right, now I have to find the number two. There it is. All right, so we're doing the same thing over in number two here. And in our existing zone, I have to move everything around on the screen. So the crosshatching area here is what's considered our, or was, our Tanner Landing Master Plan Overlay District. And again, when the, the council adopted the new chapter 1813, which you reviewed back in the spring, the ordinance for that actually got rid of that overlay district. And it's the same intent. We're trying to simplify, get rid of overlays and make the zoning just more direct to what it is. So that property is the Dahlgren property, and it's currently under development. That's where you see all the grading equipment and the clearing occurring out there. The left four acre or the left majority of the property is to be the multifamily development. And multifamily was permitted under the provisions of the overlay, even though the underlying zone was Employment Park One. The right hand of the property, the easternmost four acres is to be dedicated as a public park. And so the proposal then is, rather than have this confusing overlay remain, let's just zone it for what the actual permitted uses are. So the right hand, go back to the other screen. So as you can see, the, the easternmost four acres is now proposed to be just zoned parks and open space. And the western part of the site is to be rezoned high-density residential, reflecting the apartments and condos that are to be developed there. Any questions on that one? Okay. The same thing is for number three. So that was called the Tanner Junction Master Plan Overlay District. And in the update to the special districts chapter in 1813, this overlay district is to remain, and the intent there is that we still do want to have some sort of master planning occurring when something is developed with this site, because it's a large site, and we don't want things just to kind of happen willy-nilly. We want to make sure that there's consistency to the roads, that there's a nicely designed site, and a maybe a mix of uses on something that large. That special districts chapter is much simpler than what the previous overlay that it replaced is, though, and that it specifies that you will prepare a master plan and had provided just some overall broad guidance about the master plan, but didn't specify particular uses or layouts of streets or things like that, that the previous overlay did. So what we're doing here with that, this is we're simplifying the zoning accordingly. So instead of that, or that we're reducing the overlay zone because we know that this corner here is the River Run Apartments, and that is the permit is ready to issue. So this is a project that is happening, and we want to just zone it for what it is. It's a multifamily development project, and so we want to rezone that to high-density residential. The remainder of the overlay will remain, again, because we want to see some sort of master planning occur on the large site that it is. Questions on that one before you go?
I had a question on that.
Okay.
So my question was, I, I feel like I remember going to a planning commission meeting a long time ago where the reason where River Run Apartments had applied to build there, and the the trade-off was that they would be allowed to build a high-density residential in an EP1 zone because they would have the affordable housing units. And in the DA, it said that if that were to go to a new owner, it would all apply. They would have to do the same. So would turning or changing the code to high-density residential void that?
No, no, it's, it's already a permitted use, and that project has already got permits ready to issue, and it's been through that process to establish those provisions, so that doesn't go away.
Is it the same company that had originally started?
Yeah. I've heard that they may be selling to somebody else, but the, the project itself would remain.
Okay, so it would be the same project under a different developer, basically. Okay, and then all the DAs that were agreed on, would, they would all flow through?
Yeah, that, the provisions of that would remain the same.
Would they have to go in and have like, like a new tree study done or do anything else? Have like a, no? Okay, that's all. Thank you.
So I had a question about the overlay district and keeping this one versus like we did with, with the number one, getting rid of it. Have, has there been any? Historically, has there been any reason why those haven't developed? Is that, is the overlay district a hindrance to that? Like you kind of mentioned with the other one, that it was, it made it confusing, and it didn't do anything different, right? I understand the idea of an overlay district when it comes to having that master plan, like you said. But is that, is, is there any thought to that overlay district being a hindrance to the, to developing those or getting those developed, I should say?
I haven't heard that myself. I know that the property owner there, I believe her name is Sherri Cooper, has expressed a desire for more simplicity. I haven't heard that it was in particular a hindrance. I think a lot of our commercial sites simply haven't developed because the market hasn't been there for quite a while for commercial development, but that's heating up now, and we're seeing more activity.
Sure.
Okay, should we go on to number four? All right, number four is a pretty simple one. This is the new Tenon Trailhead Park site. So previously, this was, this part has been zoned low-density residential, and the part of it that's north of Ribberry Way was zoned high-density residential. And that was originally anticipated for that kind of residential development. The city acquired that about four or five years ago now, and that's our planned trailhead park. So we'll be having Seive's actually gonna start construction on that this fall, doing some initial trails that'll provide mountain bike access. And then, starting in 2023, King County is going to do a larger project that'll provide a parking lot and a restroom and a, a major trailhead that'll connect you up onto Rattlesnake Mountain and over to Snoqualmie Point Park. So that's a big connection and a great new park, and we just wanted to rezone that to reflect what it is. Any questions on that one?
Thanks for the update on that, Mike.
Yeah. So number five is similar context. So this is property that was previously owned, actually quite a while ago now, about eight or nine years ago, by Nintendo. And as a part of a development agreement with Nintendo, Nintendo actually dedicated the property within the floodway to the city of North Bend for the purpose of a future extension of South Fork Avenue Southwest. So that's the, the road that now goes into the outlet mall and dead ends at Nintendo. So our plan is that this will become a bypass to the Bendigo and North Bend Way intersection, which is our tightest or busiest intersection in the city that causes a lot of backups. So as a part of that, everything that would be to the west, I'm sorry, to the east of that road, between the road and the Snoqualmie River would be permanent open space. And there's also potential for levy setback in that area. So King County has a tentative study and a plan to eventually set back the levies on the right, the left bank of this Snoqualmie River, to give the, the river a little bit more breathing room during flood situations to reduce flood impact to the rest of the town. So the purpose there is parks and open space and levy setback, both public purposes. And so we don't need that to be zoned Employment Park anymore. So the proposal is just to rezone it parks and open space. Very similar situation for number six. This is a property that's owned by King County River Section. They acquired that a few years ago for the purpose of removing the home. The home was located in the floodway and to prevent future insurance claims and losses. The county just outright purchased it through their flood section. They removed the home, and their intent is just to remain as open space. And so I've contacted the county. They're in support of rezoning the property to Parks Open Space rather than Employment Park, which is what it, what it used to be. Any questions on either of those? All right, over to number seven. So this is EJ Roberts Park. So the smaller green rectangle is the original EJ Roberts Park. And then about four or five years ago, the southern part of the, below the number seven there was added as a part of the River Glen subdivision. So they dedicated that as a part of their park requirements, and it became a part of EJ Roberts Park dedicated to the city as an expansion. And then about two years ago, the eastern part here was added. So this property, the entire property here was for sale. And as a means to prevent it from turning into a larger subdivision, we heard a lot of comment from the public that they wanted to see it preserved. The city entered into an agreement, a purchase and sale agreement, when the person bought that property to do a boundary line adjustment and to the city purchased the southern half of that. And so that's a additional addition to EJ Roberts Park. So again, both of those were previously zoned low-density residential, and the proposal here is just to rezone it to Parks Open Space, reflecting the public use.
Mike, is that still the city park or is that Seive Park?
That's a city park.
Okay.
Yeah, Seive View has expressed that they, they're not really interested in dealing with the smaller parks. They want to deal with large parks that are kind of a regional benefit. But otherwise, they want to leave the, the remainder to the city. All right. Where's number eight? Zoom out so I can find it easier. Okay, over here. So the number eight is, we call it the Tanner Shoreline Park, Tanner Road Shoreline Park. And it's just a little sliver of land that was dedicated by the Cascade Canyon subdivision, and it provides a new trail out to the shoreline there at the corner. And its future purpose is just open space preservation. It was dedicated as a part of the the plat, as there was some critical areas down there, and it was a better purpose to turn it into a park rather than to divide it up, have some kind of weird little isolated critical areas that separated or with some homes that would then separate the rest of the plat from the river. And so that was dedicated to the city as park space, and we're proposing just to zone it for Parks and Open Space rather than loaded to be residential. All right. Number nine. So this is kind of an interesting one in that it has not ever had zoning. So number nine is William H. Taylor Park, where the depot is. And that's actually old railroad right of way. And so up until now, it hasn't ever been zoned. And we're proposing to zone it as parks and open space, just to reflect that it's a park. Just makes it a little bit more transparent on the map. Helps us to make sure that we're quantifying our park and open space in some of our land use assumptions accordingly. And so we're proposing to zone it.
So Mike, this is Mark Jostin. May I ask a question?
Yeah.
I know I not, I know I'm not on the commission, but that property, as I'm sure you're aware, actually extends south across Park Street.
Oh, yeah.
And that whole, there's a home there that, you know, the city regularly mows their front yard, and they park their cars on it all the time. But no one would ever go have a picnic in the front yard of the home that is there. So the, the, I'm sorry, the question is why, why, right, I mean, that big white space right there, you know, above H on Healy is in the same railroad right of way that is encompassed by Taylor Park and isn't included in this finally, after all this time. I mean, you're leaving, you're leaving this little parcel there that the city maintains and spends money on and mows. But it's, you're choosing at this moment not to also include that and rezone it. So that's my question. Why not include that too? And if it were up to me, I'd rezone the north half as public space and the south half as single-family residential in hopes that it can be flipped. You see that little red, you know, that red parcel there is the home that faces Healy. But the city mows their front yard. And, and you, that home needs to have an address that is a Healy address, and the north part of that parcel needs to be incorporated into public land, and there should be a swap. I won't, I, I'll be quiet now, but yeah, I am surprised that finally that this is being, you know, there is no parcel boundary here at all. There hasn't been. And finally, it's being incorporated and given a parcel ID. But you're leaving this one little piece still hanging out there and not addressing it.
Yeah. So to respond to that, it's probably just a mapping error where our GIS person just grabbed the thing that was part of the park. I can ask her to extend that down to include the remainder of the right of way. The second part of that would be the swap. We don't want to rezone something that splits a property. So having a split zone is confusing to appraisers and, and for lots of different purposes. So I think what we'd want to do is pursue that, and then once we've done that, then we would come back and rezone accordingly.
I'm, I'm gonna offer just one more piece of insight, which is, it's really nice to see that this map correctly apportioned Seive Park as green, and the two parcels south of Park Street as green. But it's also true that the parcel immediately north of Park Street and to the right of this, that's also now owned by the Seive Metropolitan Park. It is also public land. Yeah, you know, just in terms of the, the park district has worked really hard to build this corridor of connection into downtown over, over the past decade, and it's finally come to fruition. And that county shed is still sitting there, but it's owned by the district, and this is being there's a master plan that's being implemented to reframe and rebuild this as an open connection to Seive Park off of Park Street, and that includes owning that parcel to, on the north side of the street. Now there's a new crosswalk that the city put in, and so this is a focus. As you well know, and it came before the work-study group of councils just this week. So just trying to make sure that folks are up to date in terms of visioning and appreciating what, you know, this is an, a, a area of interest. That's all.
Thank you. That's a good point, and I will ask our GIS person to, to redesignate that property that's owned by Seive there. Any other thoughts from the planning commission? Our final one there is number 10, and this is the same idea. So this is actually old I-90, or at least what I-90 used to be, this, the Sunset Highway. So So North Bend Way and Cedar Falls Way used to be, I, I believe they were both one ways as a part of the old Sunset Highway. And the original plan back in the nineteen sixties was to route the new freeway right by the downtown. And this was a part of that. So the side view park. And then what number 10 is, is remaining right away. So it's, it's not even a parcel. At this point, we're, we're working on the process to create a parcel out of it. But again, we're creating a zone where there has been unzoned property before. And this is owned now by the city of North Bend and the side view metropolitan park district. And so we're zoning it appropriately, reflecting future park use.
Again, Mike, I'll just weigh in to say that, right, you're exactly right. But it, there's a line that should run essentially east, west, down the middle. And the north half is owned by the city. And the south half is owned by the park district, but I also will again, the boundary is wrong in that there, there's a cul-de-sac at the end of Fifth Street there. And, and what's shown here is street connecting that cul-de-sac to Orchard where there's a barricade is actually part of the same parcel. So the parcel boundary actually should come down and touch what's yellow, you know, the, the land ownership there does include what is currently paved west of the barricade at the end of Fifth Street and is owned by the park district. And again, this is just, my intention is simply to make sure that people have, you know, everybody's on the same page moving forward. That's all.
Yeah. Yep. I appreciate the comment. I'll, I'll ask our GIS person to take a look at that. All right. And I believe that is all of them. Make sure there's not an eleven here.
Is area ten right now, what does that look like? Is it just?
So that's right behind the Orchard Place Apartments and there's a trail there that was built as part of the Orchard Place Apartments. And that's a public trail. And that's at the northern part of that overall parcel. The rest of it is just kind of brush and, and forest right now.
Yeah. Overgrown is what areas and.
Yeah. So what we'll do is we'll, we'll make some edits based on the comments that Mark provided. And we will bring this back to you with a public hearing at your next planning commission meeting.
Commissioners, this is our chance to make any comments as well on what we've heard tonight. We won't be recommending anything tonight. This was just the introduction and stuff, but if you have any comments that you would like to make regarding what we're doing, what they're doing here and stuff, this is, this would be the time. Any questions at all where it's located? I, I think I have maybe one on the Tanner thing, but I'll let you guys go ahead. If you have one, please share now.
Just an overall comment, just commending you for cleaning this up and making it a lot more legible and clear. And, and getting some of these map amendments done now to make the, the comp plan update go a little smoother. It's pretty smart. Yeah, it's, it's a lot less confusing.
I, I would agree with that. It's, it's, it's kind of overdue and I'm glad you're doing it. It makes it so much easier to read and so much clearer to understand. So that's, it's a good thing. I, I had a question. I think it's on number three. That, is that the Tanner? If I'm going on North Bend Way? And I get right to the Tanner there where I could go down Tanner Road. And this always looks like, is that where the old? There was a shed that was on there that was taken apart and moved to the North Bend Arts. Thank, is that the?
No, that was right here. So that's.
Okay, okay. Thank you. All right.
So this is all, all of number three is just kind of big open gravel area, like blackberries and gravel.
So it's where the casino would do their overload parking once in a while.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay. So there is, this is the houses that, that are near it. Some, I can't, I can't quite read all those streets, but there's a housing development and this is going to be all of that area that's we're talking about on number three. There we go. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that, that answers my question. Thank you. Anybody have any comments at all they want to make? Mr. Joshua, do we have anything else to share with us?
I simply want to express my appreciation that I'm willing, you're willing to hear me in this forum and that I get to be present and comment. I, I again appreciate everybody's willingness to show up and be present and participate in this process. Cause this is, you know, this is kind of where the rubber meets the road and I, I don't have an agenda. I have served on the park district for, since its inception. And to have a, a particular affinity for the connection of side view park to downtown and Henry Taylor Park. And I'm thrilled that the city is seeking to engage and move it forward. And I am sorry, the work study session wasn't, you know, more productive and that, that, that I sensed a certain lack of vision on a part of council, which I regret. And so I wish you all well in engaging with them and, and moving forward with that which you're engaged in, you know, so again, I appreciate being heard. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I don't, that's our agenda for this evening. As far as I could see, Mike, did I miss anything on here? We've done that.
Yeah, we were going to talk about just the meeting schedule coming up for the, for the end of the year.
We don't want to adjourn to, I hit packet. We, they've set some dates due to some holidays. And so let's get those on our personal calendars, November, December, two oh two one. The meeting adjustments are as follows, November eighteenth and December ninth. Meetings if needed, apparently they're right around the holidays. So we might get the month off. We'll see how that goes. We're going to cancel November eleventh, twenty fifth and twenty third due to the holidays. I would suspect there might be a meeting called within that range, certainly the first, first three, but it will be as needed. And so just mark your calendars and watch your email. If something comes through that they need a decision on or we need to meet, we'll want, we'll want to make sure that we have done that for our, our team. Any questions? No. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
We don't need motions or adjourn, Rover.
Oh, that's right. I, you're right. I forget about that one. It is now seven thirty-nine and this meeting will be adjourned. Thank you very much for coming.
All right. Thank you all.
Thanks, Mike.